All right, council, we are live on Rogers TV on SUE Today and on the city's YouTube page. I'd like to begin the meeting by thanking our media and broadcast partners for covering tonight's event. And I'd like to acknowledge with respect that we are in Robinson here on treaty territory and that the land on which we are gathered is the traditional territory of the Anishnaabe and known as Bawating. Bawating is home to Garden River First Nation, Batjwana First Nation, and the historic Sault Ste. Marie county council. We've got a couple of just order changes in the agenda. I know we'll get adoption in minutes in a second, Madam Clerk, but we will move, we'll start with physician recruitment as that's first on our presentations, then we'll go to Section 9.1 as there's a number of people in the audience here who are interested in the outcome of that one, and then we'll go to the transit report. So that is a minor change in the order for tonight. Madam Clerk?
I have a motion by Councilors Vessel Allen and Gardi. Counselor Gardi is attending virtually. We resolve that the minutes of regular council meeting of October 14, 2025 be approved.
All in favor. That carries.
Counselor Scott is not here yet, but he's declared a peculiar interest with respect to Agenda Item 7.7, the NCC garage lease with Algoa District School Board as his spouse is employed by ADSP, and I haven't received any others.
Any other conflicts, council? Saying none, we can move on.
And I have a motion by Councilors Vessel Allen and Gardi resolved that the agenda for November 3, 2025, city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor.
And the Sault Ste. Marie Physician Recruitment Retention Program, Tasha Varpio, is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Varpio. You're free to take the center mic here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I am the manager of physician recruitment and retention, and tonight I'm going to give you an overview of what's been happening. I've been at this post a year this month, and it's been exciting and challenging. And I'll have a short presentation and then answer any questions you might have. So my role is to recruit physicians for the city of Sault Ste. Marie, and that entails Suraia Hospital, the Group Health Centre, Great Lakes Clinic, and Superior Family Health Team. And on our committee, we have three partners that contribute to our $300,000 budget. That's the city of Sault Ste. Marie, Suraia Hospital, and the Algoa West Academy of Medicine. This last year, I'm going to give you some highlights, had the opportunity to recruit 12 physicians to our community, nine of those being family physicians, six of those are something called PRO or Practice Ready Ontario Physicians. I'll deal with that in the next slide. We've had two family physicians join the Great Lakes Clinic from the UK and one set to join the Group Health Centre this fall. We've had one pathologist join Suraia Hospital, pediatrician join Group Health Centre, and a medical oncologist join Suraia Hospital. I also want to say, warm welcome. I didn't recruit them, but they started during my time here, physician couple, Dr. Nora Beth Mercier, an obstetrician gynecologist, and her husband, Dr. Joey Mercier, an internal medicine physician. And Nora is local, and so we welcome her back home. I'm in the process of recruiting three physicians that are hoping to come here on academic license, and I've done a number of site visits, 14 in fact, and that just brings physicians to our community and introduce them to the medical community, community tours. It's a great way to help people make their decision to come here. I also had the opportunity to go on three recruitment events to Dublin, and we have a lot of Canadian medical students in Dublin. And with a focus on the United States, I got to attend a conference on Mackinac Island, Summer for Family Medicine Conference, and in the fall to Salt Lake City for an emergency physician conference. So PRO, Practice Ready Ontario, I get a lot of questions from people in the community, it's a good question, about internationally trained physicians and how do we help them practice? This program deals with just that. Physicians that have been trained outside of Canada have the opportunity to be a part of this program, and they do a 12-week clinical assessment in the North, and then they commit to a northern community. And we've had the opportunity to have six family physicians commit to a three-year return of service. So three at the group, two at Great Lakes Clinic, and one at Superior Family Health Team. Big initiative, big topic among recruiters is American physicians. It has never been as easy, it's still not easy, but the pathway for a US-trained physician to practice in Ontario, and this is good news for us. We have some conversations, getting really close, I hope, to some recruitment of American, of Michigan-based docs to come and practice here. And yeah, it was a fruitful two conferences I attended. The one in Salt Lake City, I was happy to represent my northeastern colleagues and colleagues recruiters from Ontario, and they helped fund that recruitment trip. So BC's had some luck with US-trained physicians, and as someone said to me, "We have the best fishing hole, being a border city, so keep your fingers crossed on that." I'm going to conclude this presentation with incentives. I have two more slides. We do offer incentives, that's a big buzzword in recruitment. We offer relocation incentives. And then Health Force Ontario offers incentives through their northern recruitment and retention initiative, and so incentives for physicians to practice in the North. My last slide is a call to action, and there's been success in other communities, and I think we're well poised to support this. It's a community incentive program, and I often get asked, "How can I help with recruitment? And what can we do to make this seem like a better place that people would want to come?" So we're going to be reaching out in the next few months to community leaders and local business leaders, and we're looking for donations to be a part of a welcome package. So think of, this is a big one, snow removal services, maybe I've heard from physicians, golf memberships, ski passes, legal services, real estate services. So you can get in touch with me, but I think that would be a great thing to have this welcome package. So that's as quick as I could go with this presentation, and I'll take your questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Varpio. Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Threway Mayor. Always great to see you. I hope this comes out the right way. You are so perfect for the role. I can't believe it's been a year. Wow, so a lot of traveling. Just a couple of questions. When my constituents heard that this was tonight's topic or one of the topics, they emailed a few questions. The first question is, can you comment on, it's a more education piece, on the funding model? There's rumors out there to say that based on our population, we are only able to have X number of specialists, such as so many pediatricians based on our population, based on our funding model. So give me an example. One constituent is saying, decisions on, you know, who we can recruit, a specialist, pediatrician, gynecologist, whatnot, orthopedic surgeon, is based on population they've heard or is based on a funding model, how much basically money, salary that is granted. Can you explain further? Is there a funding cap? Or is there a cap on how many pediatricians we have or how many orthopedic surgeons we can have and so forth?
I'm not dealing with a funding model. We have a physician human resources plan, and so I work with the hospital and the group and our clinics to address that and meet those needs, but not so much. In my work, there's not a cap that I've come across, and I may stand to be corrected. There's funding models for, funding for departments at the hospital that I'm aware of, but not for recruitment.
Okay. So I believe in your presentation, just going to the slide with regards to, you have recruited 12 physicians to Sault Ste. Marie, nine family physicians, one pathologist, one pediatrician, and one medical oncologist, which is fantastic. So just for the clarification, one person who is a pediatrician was saying that Sault Ste. Marie can have only so many pediatricians, so that's not true then?
If, I'm not aware of that? No, but let me check on that and get back to you.
Okay. And so that's the piece that this constituent was very curious about. They were under the impression that there's capped, and orthopedic surgeons, we can have only so many orthopedic surgeons because of surgery time. And so those are some rumors are out there that if you can educate us, that'd be great.
Absolutely, and I will get back to you on that. I feel like we have a full complement in our orthopedic surgeon, with our orthopedic surgeons. But yeah, to be continued.
Okay, and if you don't mind, two more questions. It's wonderful that we're having these individuals coming to Sault Ste. Marie, but there is concern that there's burnout. We may only have two specialists that are carrying the heavy load. Do you have any comments on how we can prevent burnout, if it does actually exist?
Yeah, it's a big question. It does exist. We have great locum support, so locum for people that aren't aware, we have physicians that come to our community regularly to help fill gaps, to prevent something like burnout, but it is a very real thing within the physician community.
Okay, and thank you. And also, we have our surrounding smaller hospitals that, do we have a relationship with them? Do we help them with regards to recruiting? I think you touched on that in your presentation. Vassillon, unfortunately, their hospital closes, their ER closes. Can you comment on the partnerships that we may have?
So we have, I'm part of something called Niopra, so it's the northeastern recruiters, and I'm actually going to a workshop in the coming weeks to work with our northern partners because it is, I see it as a risk. I see it as something that, you know, we have to help each other out. Currently, I don't recruit for Vassillon, but definitely if there was someone that was interested in going there, I would make those connections.
Okay, and just the final question with regards to physician assistants. Is there a possibility to recruit physician assistants?
Yeah, this is a new thing, and when I was in Salt Lake City, I had a lot of questions about it in the States. It looks like they're using them a lot. We've had some physician assistants who are currently in school come and do rotations in Sault Ste. Marie, and the feedback has been very positive. We've had them in the Emerge, we've had them in the OR. And yeah, it's definitely something we are interested in pursuing.
Okay, thank you. Again, these are just questions I received from constituents, so thanks for educating us.
It's great. I'm glad people are interested and engaged.
And your idea about putting together the welcome package, very creative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hollingsworth. Counselor Vessel Allen?
Thanks, Tasha, for the presentation. I know in terms of incentives, and I think you're speaking to that right now with the, you know, welcome package, and we do offer a $10,000 moving allowance. In terms of other northern communities that may have larger incentives such as Timmins, does that definitely, is that a disadvantage to us or to you when you're looking at recruiting physicians to Sault Ste. Marie? That we don't have the cash incentives that other northern communities do?
I've been here a year, and when I first started, I thought it was going to be a big detriment. And in the year that I've been doing this work, I've heard some things like, "You could offer me $2 million to go to place X, and if I don't want to go there, the $2 million doesn't really mean much to me." I think in terms of our relocation, yeah, $5,000 within the province, $10,000 outside of the province. People are really pleased to get that. I had a physician that was offered an incentive to go somewhere else, and I thought it was going to be, I thought there was a risk of us losing them, and they would, they chose to practice here. So our physician community, our community at large, plays a big, big role, and the incentives that the Ontario government is giving for people coming to the North, they seem quite pleased with that. Now, I haven't come into a situation where I have been, say, competing with another community. You know, recruiters, we were always talking, we're always comparing notes. I haven't had that situation. So I'm saying, one year in, I don't believe that incentives are as big a draw as I originally thought.
Great. The OMA stated that we're about 350 short in the North for practicing physicians, 200 of those being primary care physicians. Do you work with the OMA in terms of their data and their statistics and have a working relationship in terms of how we can help each other in terms of recruitment in the North?
So a big thing for me coming into this post was statistics. And I've recently had the pleasure of hiring someone who is creating a very robust data base for me so that we have statistics that can inform and support our decisions, and working with the OMA is a vital piece of that.
Last question. Do you find with foreign-trained physicians and the red tape that they have to go through to be able to practice here in Ontario, Canada, do you find that that's a detriment in terms of recruitment? And especially when you were in Dublin, where you were focusing more on expats coming back? Or was it actually Irish nationals that were wanting to come to Canada?
It was expats. And so in physician recruitment, there are certain countries, Ireland being one of them, where med students have an easier pathway. We talk about pathways into practicing in Ontario. So if you go to med school in Ontario and in Canada and you're a Canadian resident, that's the easiest pathway. If you attend medical school in one of the countries, Ireland being one of them, Australia being another, again, that's a slightly more difficult pathway, but an easy pathway. The big hurdle is for internationally trained physicians that aren't on that list. And there is a pathway, there's the academic license, there's a restricted license, there's this PRO, but it is a big hurdle. We have standards and procedures in place for a reason, though, and I think Ontario, I don't think, I know it's the most difficult. And I don't know that we want to remove all of those barriers. We have to, it's a challenge to work with them, but it's serving us well.
Thank you so much. Nothing else?
Thank you, Counselor Vessel Allen. Counselors Agordo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Varpio, and thank you for your presentation today. That's wonderful news in terms of your limited resources, what we are doing, so that's great. My question is along the lines of, we know that some doctor responsibilities have passed down to nurse practitioners. Are nurse practitioners part of the recruitment process? This is not to add more to your, you know, limited resources, I understand, but does that come up as a topic even though we know doctors are the first priority?
It hasn't as of yet. I think nurse practitioners, physician assistants are a piece of the puzzle. They aren't under my purview right now to recruit, but the group has had, the Group Health Centre has had some success, and so, you know, I look forward to working with them to see how that plays out.
Mr. Mayor, additional information?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselors Agordo. Excuse me, it was something that the committee did consider at the time, but it was decided not to do that just given our limited resources and our focus on physicians and trying to keep our physician recruitment managers' efforts really focused to land the doctors that we need. I think obviously, as Tasha has mentioned, there is a demand currently, and then also we know the retirements that are coming with our physician pool and the age of them, so we're definitely focused heavily on physicians.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. Just two questions regarding the academic licensing. How long does it take for a doctor to receive it? And is it someone from out of the province? Or where?
Sorry, someone from out of the province making the decision?
No, no. Where these doctors are.
Oh, where they're coming from. Yes, they're typically internationally trained physicians. I wish I had an answer for you on the timeframe. It has, it's been quite a steep learning curve navigating it. I hope the next time I'm here, I can say that I've been successful in it. We're really looking for physicians that have a lot of research, a lot of academic experience. So it is a very, it's a very specific pathway. I, in the past, we have a few physicians here on academic license. I would think, to give you a big range, it would be more than six months to bring someone here.
And out of the nine family physicians, where are they practicing?
Oh, sure, I can tell you that. So the PRO candidates, physicians, so three of them are at the Group Health Centre, two are at Great Lakes Clinic, and one is at Superior Family Health Team. And Great Lakes Clinic recruited two family physicians from the UK, and we have another family physician starting at the Group Health this fall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Bruni. Counselor Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Varpio, is there any part of the program that would keep tabs Ms. Farpio, is there any part of the program that would keep tabs on students that are going to be trained to be physicians?
Absolutely, yes. So this, my position, there used to be the NOSOM coordinator under the physician recruitment manager. NOSOM coordinator is now a full-time role and is not under physician recruitment, but we have a very close working relationship. And that database that I alluded to will keep track of all of our medical learners, as we call them. So we have people here on their third year, their clerkship year, here as residents, here doing electives. That is a most definite recruitment path. And I'm working with them on events. I've done events for learners that are here, residents that are in our community.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you can keep tabs on them sort of if they're staying in Ontario. What if they're going international?
Yeah.
You do as well?
Yeah, absolutely. So I, in my short time, I've met a lot of local, local med students that are not just at NOSOM, so that are in med school across Canada, international. And when they are home, I've had the opportunity to meet with them. But yeah, absolutely, you know, keeping up to date on their progress and, and of course, welcoming them here if they choose.
That's great. Is there any way that you would want to be contacted if there was a student who was like studying somewhere? Is there like a certain pathway you would want them to follow?
They can, they can reach out to me by email. They can call me, my number is readily available. And yeah, I'm always open to meeting them.
Okay, thank you. That's everything.
Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you. Ms. Farpio, just in terms of recruitment this year, I noticed on the Practice Ready Ontario stats, that seems, sorry, I'm just trying to, I lost the slideshow there. That seems to be a slightly higher number than the average recruited over the last, whatever, 20 years, if you count, if you, if you average those years out, a couple higher? Yeah?
Yeah.
Is that because of Practice Ready Ontario, or is it a combination of Practice Ready and local recruitment?
I think it's a combination. I mean, I want that number much higher. But yeah, Practice Ready, when I first started, that was, it was very new. I know Sudbury's had a lot of success with it, and, you know, so have we. It's something that is continuing, but I want to make sure the six that we have here are feeling welcome, are feeling, are integrating nicely. We did plan a welcome reception, as you know, we've had to postpone it. But yeah, I think this is something we can have, you know, for the next few years to come. But yeah, that has helped.
And then in terms of, you know, the challenges that you've encountered over the last year, what would you say are the top one or two? From a recruitment standpoint?
From a recruitment standpoint, learning the job and at once changing it to meet the needs of today. So learning and changing at the same time has been a challenge, a challenge I welcome. I think always the funding. Funding is, you know, is something that I will probably always be bringing to the committee and probably this council.
And then not to suggest an additional answer, but I know at the committee you've talked about housing a lot.
Oh, absolutely, yes. So housing is, housing is a big issue. And so, as I had said before, the manager role and the NOSOM coordinator role worked together, and that is, that has been a change. So finding housing for students that are here and also, under my purview, physicians that move here. So this could be another call to action. If anyone would like, anyone is aware of a rental property, and it's not always a full year, you can, like, you can definitely get in touch with me. Because yeah, that is another piece of making people feel welcome is helping them find appropriate rentals.
Thank you. Okay, those subject, any other questions or all the questions? Thank you, Ms. Farpio. Madam Clerk?
So we will go to Agenda Item 9.1, Northern Avenue Intersection Improvements. A motion by Councilors Vezel Allen and Hollingsworth, whereas intersection improvements at the Great Northern Road and Northern Avenue East intersection and the Northern Avenue East Peewee Metro intersection were identified as high priority capital requests for projects not already included. And whereas these intersections in the surrounding area have the highest concentration of residents with disabilities due to large numbers of accessible residential units at 277A Northern Avenue 31 and 59 Old Garden River Road. And whereas, given increased development in the area, additional vehicles and pedestrians are anticipated to utilize these intersections. And whereas current pedestrian facilities are not adequate and do not meet current Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act standards. And whereas the Accessibility Advisory Committee has conducted a thorough examination of the area and identified significant safety and accessibility concerns, including inaccessible curb cuts, no access for motorized wheelchairs, unsafe slip lanes, among other concerns. And whereas the current infrastructure is not deemed safe or accessible by the Accessibility Advisory Committee during the public consultation process in association with the Trinity Tower development, a common theme for those residing in the area was that the current state of the pedestrian infrastructure at both intersections is not safe. And whereas the Great Northern Road, Northern Avenue intersection is one of the busiest pedestrian intersections in Sault Ste. Marie. Over a 12-hour period on March 202025, there were a total of 30,401 vehicles and 371 pedestrian crossings at this intersection. Additional developments such as the 108-unit Trinity Tower, 32-unit former Catalina Motel, and full commercial buildout of the Princess Auto Plaza will increase both vehicular and pedestrian traffic in the area. And whereas it was estimated to cost $600,000 to complete the scope of work for both intersections, now therefore be it resolved that the Northern Avenue East Peewee Metro intersection be added to the 2026 budget as a service level change, as it is not included within the recommended capital program for 2026 for upcoming budget deliberations.
Councilor Vezel Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank my colleague on the Accessibility Committee, Councilor Hollingsworth, for seconding this. And this came up after this project was not included to be added to recommended capital program for the 2026 budget deliberations. And I want to recognize folks that are here from the Accessibility Committee. We have Derek, we have Craig, we have Carol, we have Carol's guide dog, we have Diane Morrell, who's our accessibility coordinator, and we have Don McConnell, that many of you here know very well. So Diane and I met after it was not included to determine the best way forward in terms of this. There was, about a year ago, a group from Accessibility, including Peter Tenazzo as well, that did a very thorough, kind of very practical day of that intersection. And Derek, I know you were involved with that as well. So it was determined at that time, the difficulties and the shortcomings within that intersection. And one in particular is crossing over for folks that are in the, either in the Knights of Columbus, which is sort of behind Sleepy's mattress, and people may not be aware that that building is still there, going to where the metro is, and then being able to go up the sidewalk. You can't cross and go up that sidewalk. There's no way for, if you're in a chair, to go that way. So you actually have to go across the parking lot, like if you want to go to Winners, or if you want to go to, have access to Staples or anything along there. So we actually have folks with mobility devices going across a parking lot because our sidewalk and that intersection, that crosswalk, is not accessible. So I'm hopeful that my colleagues on council will see the importance of this. It is, you know, a basic human right accessibility, safety matter. It is, does come with a high price tag of $600,000, but we want to have it included in the budget deliberations for 2026. And Diane, our accessibility coordinators here, if anyone from council might have some other questions in terms of the thoughts from Accessibility Committee.
Thank you, Councilor Vezel Allen. Councilor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. I just want to also echo my colleague, Councilor Lisa Vezel, and she summarized it well. But thank you for coming tonight. And for those that are non here, who are on Accessibility Committee, thank you for all the hard work that you do for the community. Otherwise, there's nothing else to add. I just feel like you summarized it very well, Councilor Lisa Vezel. And I do hope that council supports this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? Council Bruny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just have comments on this, because it's a last minute, $600,000 expense, and I know it's going on the 2026 budget as a service level change. I prefer if it goes on the supplementary, for the, for an extra cost to the city, not knowing what the budget is yet. I think it's very important that we should know what our budget is going to be. The $600,000 is quite expensive, and I did speak to Diane earlier about this.
Council Bruny, Mr. Face is signaling that he has some feedback to that comment.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, the supplemental has now changed in that service level request form, so it's the same thing. The, by putting this item on the service level change request does not mean it's part of the 2026 capital budget. Council will still need to pull that item and vote on it separately to include in the budget. So in effect, the resolution as it's written right now will adhere to that logic.
Gets it on the list for consideration at budget.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, council? Okay, seeing none, we can have a vote on that matter, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Thank you, everyone, for attending. 6.2, Madam Clerk?
I don't know if Councilor Spina is able to.
He said his video wasn't working, but that is...
As I do for you voted in the affirmative. Councilor Gardi affirmative? Do I see, Councilor?
No, that's WSAP. Councilor Spina, were you saying something there?
Yes, sorry, I'm just trying to pull it into eScribe at the same time here, so I can vote in eScribe for you.
I can do it for you. You are in the affirmative?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That will bring us to Agenda Item 6.2, the Sault Ste. Marie Transit Route Optimization and Terminal Relocation. And Jeremy Finkelmann, Lead Transit Centre of Excellence, Senior Transportation Planner with WSP, has joined the call.
Welcome to council, Mr. Finkelmann.
Hi, folks. Hi, your worship council. It's a pleasure to be here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So just waiting for my presentation to be called up. That's great.
There you go, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you very much, your worship council. Today, we're going to be talking through briefly the results of the comprehensive review, review of the conventional transit operation that was conducted by WSP for the city of Sault Ste. Marie over the past 10 months or so. If we could go to the next slide, please? The project as a whole provides a comprehensive review and strategic plan for Sioux Transit over the coming five and 10-year timeframes. The plan essentially reviewed the current city transit network, examined effectiveness and efficiency of the existing bus routes, the on-demand, weekend on-demand system, while also considering changing ridership demographics in the near and medium term. It took another look at past council decisions to move the terminal to 111 Huron Street. It also provided recommendations to optimize service while continuing to provide safe and efficient transit services to the city. It looked at innovative service delivery models and also took a look at the city's parabus services to ensure that they provide the service that the community needs. If we could go to the next slide, please? The study was conducted over an eight-to-10-month timeline and included a variety of stages. Critically, we took a look at the existing network, analyzed it through a variety of different lenses, identified what the critical issues and opportunities were for that system, and then consulted with the public on two separate occasions. The first occasion was to sort of gut check our review of the system and to hear from the public, as well as stakeholders around what they considered the issues to be in the transit system. We then got to work and developed out a few different options. We went back to the public, discussed with the public what those potential options might be, wanted to hear very clearly from the public, as well as other stakeholders, what their preferences were, because at the end of the day, obviously, it's their system. We want people to be happy with it. And then, following that, evaluated the technical sides, the fleet staffing costs, fare structure, and a variety of subsequent improvements that go above and beyond the actual routes themselves, and finally moved forward to drafting recommendations and the final report. Next slide, please. Just a bit of a touch point of where Sioux Transit is today. Sioux Transit operates two different systems, the conventional system as well as the parabus system. What I'm showing here on the left is a historic number of ridership. You can see it dipping down over the COVID period and then picking back up. Actually, in 2024, Sioux Transit hit a record 1.9 million trips in 2024, which exceeds pre-COVID numbers. And indeed, I believe actually is a record for the system, an all-time record for the system. It is served with around 82,500 service hours annually, which means that about 23 people or 23 passenger trips are accommodated for every hour of service that's invested in the system. The parabus system served about 40,900 trips with about 19,000 service hours, equating out to about 1.6 passenger trips for every revenue hour invested in that system. Altogether, there's 28 coach buses in the Sioux Transit fleet, three community buses, and 10 parabuses. Go to the next slide, please. In terms of a summary of existing conditions, the current system is ultimately a coverage-based system. It's designed to maximize coverage in the city and to connect everybody to downtown, specifically the Dennis Street Terminal, where transfers are then made. Because it's a coverage-based system, the routes can be a bit circuitous, and this is typical for communities of Sioux's size. But it can result in relatively indirect travel and circuitous routing for people that... you know, be to get to different locations in, in, in town. Another issue that we noted was on-time performance. Some of the routes are, are too long to be comfortably accommodated in the time that is allowed. So as a result, there's, there's, there are on-time performance issues that are creeping up in the, in the current system. The system is served based on a 30-minute frequency structure. All routes depart from Dennis Street at the central terminal every 30 minutes in the daytime period. That shifts to a 60-minute in the evening and on weekends. So you have all the buses sort of coming together, allowing for that transfer to take place, and then all the buses depart. There, there is a service gap that was noted by the public and, and indeed through the technical analysis as well during that transition from daytime to evening service every weekday. And that gap could, could extend, you know, 60, 75 minutes, up to even 105 minutes for some routes. Meaning that, you know, if, if, if you're a passenger and you miss that last bus around 6:00 PM or so, that, that, that last daytime bus, you may have to wait 105 minutes to get on your next bus, just as the buses readjust to the, to the evening schedule. Also, the system has a weekend evening on-demand service, which we heard through the process is quite unpopular and has, again, looking at the technical, has, is basically oversubscribed. It, it cannot accommodate the demand at that, at that level for an on-demand service. We go to the next slide, please. So in terms of what we heard, and this was mainly gathered in the first, and the first discussion with people, stakeholders, the public, transit operators, as well as through a survey that was completed by about 375 people, which is pretty good for a study of this nature in a, in a community of Sioux's size. In general, we heard feedback noting that the transit should not only be a means for point-to-point transportation, but should support an equitable, affordable, and sustainable community, and that the city should provide easy, accessible, and affordable public transit that allows citizens to choose to take transit and rely less on private vehicles. When we asked folks for what their priorities are, we heard clearly that people were looking for improved frequency and reliability. We also heard priorities for improving route directness, removing weekend on-demand transit. I'm, I'm showing a pie chart on the right of the slide here, just to emphasize the, the responses that we got back for that particular question when we asked people, how has your experience been with Sioux Transit's on-demand service? It was really a predominantly negative experience, three quarters of respondents responding negatively there. We also heard about the need to improve the paratransit booking experience, especially around the need for urgent trips. And finally, we, we heard about the necessity to address that 6:00 PM service gap that I, I've just mentioned. We go to the next slide. So in terms of option development and evaluation, once we heard back from the public, we regrouped and developed three different potential servicing options. The first option was more of a do-minimal, addressing sort of necessary changes to route length to make sure that the service was operating reliably. We then decided to, to, to take a look at, at more comprehensive route redesign options. And we took a look at two different flavors of route redesign options. Option two, Sioux Loops, is based on a, a redesign of the network, based on two, two-way loops, four different two-way loops, again, maintaining the current servicing parameters. Whereas option three, Sioux Spine, redesigns the network based around a central transit spine or a couple of central transit spines operating at 15-minute frequencies. Option three does require additional investment to be able to maintain the coverage and to be able to maintain the, the 15-minute spines. Next slide, please. Going back to the public for the second round of consultation, we heard back through a second survey that option two was preferred, actually from, from the public's perspective as well as from the operator's perspective. About 72% of the public supported option two, which is developed as a cost-neutral option. From a technical perspective, our feeling was that it is also a technically superior option. So we were happy to see that the public sort of concorded with, with, with that, with that technical understanding. Next slide, please. In terms of the proposed redesign, we call it Sioux Loops because it is sort of based on these, these, these four loops, four two-directional loops. It, it, it incorporates those, those loops as well as the existing community bus route, which remains as is today, the same frequency, the same alignment. The route frequency is based on 30-minute daytime service, 60-minute evening and weekends, which is the same as today in terms of how often the buses come. But the, the, the benefit of, of the loops is, is, is really comes into play when we combine departure time offsets. So i- in this case, we are strongly suggesting offsetting departure times by 15 minutes for each direction of travel in the, in the loop to be able to provide people a route redundancy, allowing people to be able to connect to the same location essentially using both different sides of the loop. So if they, you know, let's say wanted to go, you know, from downtown to the hub or downtown to Walmart, downtown or elsewhere, Algoa to the hub, they could travel in either direction, which allows people the ability to essentially depart every 15 minutes to travel to their destination, aligning with the public's number one priority in terms of increasing frequency. In addition to that, there's a considerable overlap between the routes. So there's, there's the ability of route choice, allowing people to be able to choose a number of different potential routing options to get between major destinations. This essentially allows for 15-minute connectivity during the daytime between, between major locations such as Walmart, the hospital, the hub, Sioux College, Algoa, downtown, and other, other key locations. We also took a look at the schedules and modified the schedules to reduce that 6:00 PM servicing gap. And now, as a result of the combination of Sioux Loops and the revised schedule, that transition period between daytime and, and evening weekday service reduces from up to 105-minute waiting for certain routes down to a maximum of 60 to 75 minutes. So a considerable improvement there. The recommendation also replaces weekend evening on-demand service with hourly fixed route service, which again was a major thing that we heard from the public. Next slide, please. I'll go over this very quickly because I know I'm running out of time. But at the end of the day, the modifications result in a net reduction of 400 annual service hours and a, and a savings of about $31,000 per year. There's no growth in service hours anticipated over the next 10 years, and the existing fleet of 18 in-service vehicles is sufficient to support these, these changes. Next slide, please. Another aspect that was looked at through this study is that of the terminal relocation. It's known that the existing Dennis Street Terminal is nearing the end of its life cycle. Of course, the city has already approved relocating the terminal to 111 Huron, which is 900 meters west of the current location. We asked a question to the public around this, this, this relocation, and we heard essentially results were fairly mixed. 49% favored maintaining the location, 51% were fine, fine with, with, with the relocation or, or with either, either potential option. There are, there are benefits to the relocation, and, and those include reducing the site constraints, which are there at Dennis Street, allowing for the development of an AODA, fully AODA compliant terminal, improved exchange operations functionality, as well as overall reduced costs. There were also a number of concerns raised, but those concerns, as a result of the new network, are largely mitigated because four of five routes will now travel right through the downtown along Queen and Bay Street, providing that 15-minute service along Queen and, Queen and Bay Street. So a lot of those concerns are mitigated, and I think other types of improvements such as improved, improved amenities and shelters with real-time scheduled displays, I think, can, can also help to further mitigate issues. Next slide, now we are nearing the end at this point. Turning our attention to next steps, the city is planning for the, or would, would, would like to implement Sioux Loops by summer 2026. This will necessitate the installation of new bus stops along some of the new segments. It will also necessitate robust training and, and public education to get people used to the new, get people and operators used to the new system. It will involve the return to fixed routes for weekend evening service as well as some ancillary implementations, such as the implementation of home-to-hub service for pawotting in the pawotting place and, and the peep patch in the evenings and on weekends. There's also recommendations to explore improvements to the parabus system. I'm happy to talk about that further, but I know I've gone far over time at this, at this time. Over the next 10 years, again, the system calls for the maintenance of 18 in-service vehicles, obviously with the existing spare ratio maintained. There will have to be ongoing vehicle replacement, but not in and above what would be required to maintain the current network. We're also recommending improvements to the sidewalks to ensure that especially busy corridors, people can easily access bus stops. That was again, another core thing that we heard from the public, and indeed, there are quite a number of gaps there. And I think with that, I will conclude, knowing that I'm already quite a bit over time. And I want to thank you, your worship, and counsel for your attention, and I look forward to questions.
Thank you. We've got Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. To our presenter, lots of information. Gosh, it's overwhelming. So I just have a few questions. The first question, you went out to the public, and I think you said you had 375 people to give you feedback. Was that actually at the open house or was it through other means?
Yeah, thank you for the question. The, the 375 people correspond to the number of people that responded to the online and in-person survey. In addition to that, there, there was, I'd have to estimate, there was about 45 or so members of the public at the first open house and a little bit less than that at the, at the second open house.
Okay, thank you. And it sounds like you have worked with many different municipalities in the past and currently to provide some advice on what are new or what their transit system should look like. In your opinion, did you think that 375 responses is appropriate to give us accurate feedback?
Thanks. Thank you for the question. For, for a study of this, of this nature, that, that type of response rate is, I would say, fairly typical. Sometimes it can be a bit higher, some, sometimes it, sorry about the light in this room, sometimes it can be a bit lower. We, we are conducting a similar, just to give you some perspective, we're, we're conducting a similar exercise currently in St. Albert, Alberta, and we hosted a stakeholder event, the public and stakeholder event, and we had four people come to the event. Not that that was, I'm just sort of illustrating that in terms of, you know, what, what, how these things can, 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 can range. I, I felt fairly comfortable with, with a response rate of 375 for this type of a project.
I always find that we're always encouraging staff to make sure that we get the best turnout. So thank you. Can you just clarify, did you say in your presentation that on the demand bus, it sounds like you're saying that you're suggesting to stop the on-demand bus? Is that correct?
I'm suggesting to replace it with fixed route services similar to what is being experienced on weekday evenings. If you allow me to go into a little bit more detail about the on-demand, weekend on-demand service, because this is really one of the clearest things that we heard from the public and from stakeholders. Currently, Sioux Transit operates evening service on the weekdays, and they operate it through, through a fixed route system. It's the same network basically that operates in the daytime. On the weekend evenings, that fixed route system stops at around 7 o'clock, 7:00, 7:15. At that point, it transitions to a on-demand basis. And the original idea of putting the on-demand in, in the, in the weekend evening was to save resources. Perhaps the city would be able to dispatch fewer buses than they would have to, and, and drivers than they would have to dispatch if they were to run a, a, a fixed route service similar to the weekdays. What has happened is because of the growth in demand in weekend on-demand service, Sioux Transit finds itself dispatching the same number of vehicles that they do on weekday evenings. And so, so there's no operating savings that are being realized now as a result of the on-demand services. In addition to that, 33% of trips are not fulfilled, meaning that you have somebody who, who places a request for a service and the bus, because it, you know, it's being routed on a, on a dynamic system, it, it cannot accommodate that request. So the system has essentially outgrown its, its operating use, and that's why we, we are making that, that, that suggestion to, to, to shift services to a fixed operation on weekend evenings, similar to that of, of the weekday evenings.
That's, thank you. That's very valuable information to know. So thank you. Well noted. And when you looked at the ridership, out of the ridership, who uses it the most? Is it still students?
Yes, students, students are, are one of the most, well, that actually, students are the, the, the largest group of, of users. Seniors also make up a significant share, but the student, the student market is, is the largest market. Yeah.
Okay. Is it fair to say it's students first and then seniors second?
Yes, that's correct. And you can see that in terms of where the boardings and the lightings take place as well. The, the largest number of boardings and the lightings take place downtown, about 2,000 boardings and lightings every day. Actually, sorry, I should say, 2,000 boardings, 2,000 people get on a bus downtown. The second highest location is the hub, which is right beside Sioux College. You know, that sees around 700 or 800. The third is Algoa at around 570. And then below that, it drops almost like number four. And then below that, it drops almost like number four drops close to a hundred, you know, so you get this sizable gap and you can really see where that activity is 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 based.
Okay. The reason I ask about the students is that I have a concern. Algoma University and Sioux College, as you pointed out, our students use it very much so. However, student population is now down in those institutions because of the foreign students. So I am very worried as we move forward in ridership that our ridership may be down because of lack of foreign students. Do you have any comments on that?
I think that's a legitimate concern. But I think it's, you know, the 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 system has seen significant growth really over the past three or four years. And I think that's 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 one of the key reasons, actually, that we we wanted to develop a revenue, a sort of cost neutral basis moving forward. You know, we're we're not targeting system growth because we do recognize that there's been a change in you know, in 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 certain demographics that are really feeding the growth in the system. And that's our response is a is a revenue neutral, is a is a cost neutral system.
Okay, I'm glad that you have flagged that and I know that you'd be working closely with our staff on ensuring that it's revenue. But I still think it's important as council that we're aware of that. Just three other questions. I do like your loop idea. And so it sounds like currently Sioux St. Marie has a small loop idea, but not really using as many loops as you're suggesting. Is that correct?
So currently, the 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 system as designed, there's putting aside the community bus. There's there's seven, there's seven routes and the seven routes are they do incorporate some one way loops, but generally they're sort of based around sort of meeting at Dennis Street and expanding outward, so expanding outward, doing a circuit and then coming back to Dennis Street. And then another route, there may be some overlap, but it sort of serves a different part of the city and then it comes back to Dennis Street. What that results in, because you have departures every, departures are being timed at the exact same time. What that results in is that if you want to travel, let's say, from, you know, northeast to St. Marie to southwest or to, let's say, northwest to St. Marie. You you may be able to transfer at the hub, but you know, you're 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 large, the system is largely designed to bring you central transfer and then take you out somewhere else. The idea of the loops is to, while there still will be a central transfer location, is to allow for more redundancy in coverage between the various routes as well as allow for certain areas to be connected, actually the main points to be connected in at least two different directions, in a lot of cases by more than just the two directions, which provides people with much more choice than what they currently have. As a result of that, it's likely that the transfers downtown will actually decrease quite a bit because the need, the need to transfer will go down. People will be able to not only more frequently travel between their core destinations, but more directly travel between their core destinations.
Which is actually a benefit to hypothetically maybe relocating the bus terminal. There will be less transfers.
That's right.
Okay. I just want to comment on the community bus versus the paribus. For the viewers at home, through you, Mayor, to maybe Ms. Nicole Mion, can you describe the difference between a community bus and a paribus? Please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. I sure can. So the paribus is a client based booking system. So individuals have to fill out a medical form by a healthcare professional to be eligible to ride the paribus system. And the paribus system is booked through two dispatch who are full time staff at Transit. It has to be booked two weeks in advance. However, having said that, we do take any bookings up until the day of. If there's availability, there's just a much higher chance and you will get the ride booked for two weeks in advance. So that one, you must be a registered client and you have to book. For the community bus, that is part of the conventional service. So it is a regular route that runs Monday to Friday for twelve hours a day, six to six. And it's got a regular route. It's servicing the senior population and provides more of a curb to curb service. So for example, a large bus and any of our other routes can't go into a parking lot. Whereas the community bus can go into a parking lot and drop people off at the front door, whether it's Food Basics or Rome's or Station Mall or somewhere similar to that. So it is available to everybody. You don't need to be of a certain age. You don't need to be registered. It's anybody with a bus pass can ride the community bus. It is geared towards the seniors.
Okay. And with regards to the community bus, does the community bus go to every retirement home in Sioux St. Marie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. No, it does not go to every retirement home in Sioux St. Marie. It does go to, just give me one second. Well, the community bus does not service the Great Northern Retirement Home, the Davie Home or Pathways, but it does service Mapleview, Collegiate Heights and Van Dale on request.
Okay. And I'll take that offline. We'll talk more about the community bus. I don't want to take precious time away from council. So thank you for that. I know that those three retirement homes are truly hoping to be part of the community bus service, but we'll talk about that later. And one last final question. What determines, what's the criteria determine where a bus stop is placed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. If you're looking for new bus stops, it would be based on any public feedback. It would be based on any current stops and the number of passengers that are boarding and alighting at that particular stop. That would also be a determination if we were to move a bus stop or add another bus stop. It could also depend on the accessibility of that particular bus stop. And if it is accessible to all individuals who may utilize transit, it would depend on if it is near a private property or a city property. So all of these would be determined in deciding where to add a bus stop, change a bus stop or remove a bus stop.
Okay. And final question, I don't know if this should be through you, Mayor, to Ms. Shelley Shell or still with Ms. Nicole Mion. Number of years ago, we did receive some federal funding and I believe some of that funding went to the maintenance. But was some of that funding supposed to be going towards the new Transit building?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. If you're referring to the ISIP funding, so the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Funds. So that funding is all capital funding that we have been, the majority of our projects since twenty twenty, since twenty nineteen have been funded through the ISIP program where the city is only responsible for twenty six point six seven percent of the funding. So there, in regards to the terminal piece of you were asking, so that piece would be funded through that.
Okay.
If it was approved.
So just clarify, so some of that money has already been spent, I believe, to enhance the maintenance barn. And so we still have some of that money that can go towards the new, if we relocate it, the new Transit building.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. So yes, we have had projects where we did improvements to one eleven Huron. So we have done some improvements in regard to the HVAC system, garage doors and other items like that throughout the years, and that was funded through the ISIP. There is a separate project dedicated specifically to the relocation of the downtown terminal to one eleven Huron. And that project has been approved by ISIP in the amount of seven point four million dollars. So at this point, the city would be responsible for twenty six point six seven percent of that. There is still the piece where council has to approve that portion of budget and the relocation of the downtown terminal to that location.
Okay. And I know there's a deadline when we have to use that by.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. The projects have to be substantially completed by October thirty first, twenty thirty three.
Okay. Okay. And thank you. That's all.
Thank you, councillor Hollingsworth. Councillor Vizel Allen?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to Ms. Mione. The twenty twenty one Tulak study, can you identify the list of deficiencies specifically in terms of the existing building on Dennis Street with building code, public spaces and AODA standards?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezo Allen. So the twenty twenty one Tulak study, which was the relocation feasibility study conducted by Tulak Engineering. It does state that it does not meet today's building code standards in regards to accessibility as they have changed over the years. So it does reference several issues in regards to, you know, signage, tactical surfaces, curb cuts, sidewalk widths, universal adult change table, as well as safe accessible paths of travel for all individuals. So it does reference that. And then it also referenced any other improvements that needed to be done in regards to the roof replacement and the HVAC systems.
Okay. Thank you. And in terms of efficiencies, so if a bus needs a minor repair or something's going on, is that able to be done at the Dennis Street Terminal? Or does that bus need to be taken offline and taken over to Huron Street for repairs?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezo Allen. Should a bus need repair? The majority of the time, it needs to be taken off the road and come to one eleven Huron. There is the odd time for a very minor repair, for example, such as the replacement of a windshield wiper, where the mechanic would drive down to the Transit Terminal, wait for the bus to come in, do that changeover at layover and then drive back. However, for the majority of maintenance, unless it's something very, very small, it doesn't, they all need to go back to one eleven Huron.
Okay, great. And for our consultant, thank you so much. In terms of the loop optimization and adding the Sioux Loops, you were talking about how there would be less need to have a transfer at the Dennis Street. So we, I think we're very much going on that traditional model where, you know, you have that one terminal and then you go out to all the outlying areas. So could you please kindly explain how that would work, especially say if someone's going from east and they need to go, they're going far east, say, from either White Pines High School and they need to go to their part time job at McDonald's on Great Northern Road, would there be a difference where they can not have to take Riverside all the way down to Dennis Street and then get to Dennis to get up to McDonald's on Great Northern Road?
That's right. So that's good, that's a good, that's a good example. So for the, for the Sioux Loops option, option two, there, 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 there would be the the option to, well, actually, if they're coming from from eastern Sioux St. Marie, there, there would be the option of them either taking Loop Two in either direction of travel or Loop Four, both of which would connect into the Great Northern Road area as well as connect to the hub if they did need to transfer to another route, meaning that they would not need to come downtown to Dennis Street to be able to transfer and then go back out north to Great Northern Road.
Okay. And in terms of the loop system, I know the Sioux College one works really, really well. How many more kind of transit areas similar to that would we have in this new loop system throughout the the entire route?
You're referring to to the transfer point at
Correct, yes.
Sioux College, yeah. So so there, there, there are no, there, there are no more formal transfer points other than the downtown transfer point and the and the northern transfer hub envisioned here. So no additional infrastructure in terms of transfer points. The reality, though, however, is that a lot of the the loops in in certain areas do overlap, meaning that you could get off on the side of the road at a bus stop, wait fifteen minutes for an intersecting bus and then how, and then take that, take that bus further.
Okay, so there would be some overlap with the route so that people could go in other directions without having to go all the way back downtown?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. My last question, and it's about paratransit, and I just wanted to make a point that the reason why nine point one was put ahead of time is so that we could accommodate folks that needed paratransit to get to and from and and they had a set time. So Nicole, in terms of the booking two weeks out, how many times has someone needed paratransit outside of that two week window that you're not able to accommodate? Are we keeping data on that? On not being able to accommodate folks if they have either an appointment change or they're having a medical emergency or if just something, you know, comes up where they want to be able to go somewhere? Do we keep data on how many times we're not able to accommodate someone?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vezo Allen. Yes, we do keep that data. It's actually a stat that we have to provide to QDA every year for the QDA stats. So here to date, there's been two hundred and seventy three rides that we were unable to accommodate. We have accommodated and provided rides to thirty thousand five hundred and eighteen clients. So it is a very small percentage. What we're finding is that the majority of the rides that are unaccommodated are often last minute ones that are requesting prime time. So for example, if somebody's looking to get somewhere for three P M. on a Wednesday, it's going to be really hard for us to accommodate that because it's a very prime time for appointments, school and whatnot in all, for all of our bookings. If individuals are willing to be a little bit more flexible, we can often accommodate them. If they're willing to go somewhere a little bit earlier or get picked up a little bit later. In regards to any type of an emergency situation, depending on what it was, obviously, they'd be able to call the ambulance, but if it was something that they wanted to do with paribus, our paribus dispatch, along with our inspectors on duty, if it's outside of hours, will do everything they can to ensure somebody gets to where they need to go. We have had that situation with individuals needing to get to a funeral that they had forgotten about for a family member. So we ensured that we got it. We got them there by trying to dispatch one of the drivers of a current paribus or even having one of our supervisors take another bus to go and accommodate them. So we do want to make sure that we're getting everybody where they need to go for very important and crucial appointments that they may have. So you can call up to, you know, the day of. However, depending on the time, we do need flexibility and we may not be able to accommodate, but we will do our best.
Thank you so much. I don't have anything further.
Thank you, councillor Vizel. And other councillors? Councillor Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Mione. Ms. Mione, we're talking about replacing weekend evening on demand. So that is currently happening after seven P M. on weekends. Is that correct? And it runs till midnight?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Caputo. You're exactly correct. Saturday and Sunday night, the regular service stops at seven P M. And then at seven fifteen, on demand starts and it goes until the end of the night. So the last bus arriving in the terminal is midnight.
So now to replace it, will the bus still be running until midnight and is that going to be on an hourly schedule?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Caputo. So essentially what will happen is the so if Sioux Loops were approved, it would just continue and it would go to the end of the night.
Midnight? Okay, great. I also wanted to ask about the home to hub taxi subsidized service, particularly to Powhatan Place, which is inward three. Is there a reason why, like, what is the reason why Powhatan Place can't be included in the regular schedule? And they're having to use this service?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Caputo. With Powhatan Place, it's currently serviced during the daytime via the community bus, which is a smaller bus that can go through that residential area. So the service remains the same for Monday to Friday during community bus hours, which is a twelve hours a day. Currently, there is a North Street bus that is also serviced with a smaller bus that we're able to accommodate Powhatan during the evenings. And then on demand is what what provides service during the weekends. When we did an evaluation of the ridership numbers and then being able to try and accommodate one of the loops in that area, it didn't work because the loops are all a large bus and it isn't recommended for large buses to go through residential areas. But also there's no way for it to really accommodate that bus stop and turn around. There's no radius for it to be able to do that. And because of the low ridership, we felt like the most economical and financially feasible way to still service individuals in that community would be able to service like we do currently in the McQueen subdivision, which is home to hub.
Okay. And those folks would be able to just reach out to the Transit Office if this were to pass to figure out how to use that home to hub service if they're new to that service?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. We've got a really good relationship with Powattin residents, and we talk to them quite often, so we would do an educational session and campaign and talk to them directly with that as to the process to be able to contact the third party to get to probably the transit, nor the transfer point, to get to where they want to go, depending on where they want to go. And they can use that evenings and weekends. And I do know that they had a lot of concerns and brought forth over the years, concerns with on-demand, so it's actually an enhanced service, what I believe, for them. So I think it's all positive in the long run.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. I just have a comment. I wanted to say, a lot of times, we don't hear the best comments regarding the transit service, you know? People don't necessarily call us to compliment, and so in dealing with the issues, I, I just want to say that you and your team have, every time I've brought an issue forward, gone above and beyond to make sure that people are accommodated, and not only just accommodated, but like you just said with, you know, that last speaking about getting somebody to a family funeral, that's, that's really important. And so thanks to your team for this report and for trying to go the extra mile, even when it is a difficult situation. So that's all from me. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Caputo. Councillor Dufour?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My first question is through you to, I believe, Ms. Mayoni. Ms. Mayoni, thank you very much for everything with the new routes, Sioux Loops. My question is, will these new transit routes, if implemented next summer, be integrated with Google Maps for trip planning for constituents in Sioux St. Marie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Dufour. Yes, they will be. So we recently got access to Google Maps, so transit staff are working really closely with the engineering department in regards to getting that all up and running. So by the time these Sioux Loops are launched, yes, they will be available on Google Maps for trip planning purposes.
That would be amazing. I think that'll be something that will really help out, especially our young ridership. A lot of teenagers, smartphones, things like that, it's going to help a lot. Will there be real-time bus tracking attached to that, or will that be an upgrade that we can look at in the future so that distance from the bus to the stop will also be available?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Dufour. So we've actually got through the OOMO, which is our Transit Fair app, and as well, we've got a link that, with our AVL, so our Automatic Vehicle Locator System, they both provide real-time services so that the passengers know when the buses are coming. So we currently do have that. In regards to the real-time on Google Maps, that is something that our team is looking into with their contact at Google.
Thank you. My other questions are for our presenter, Jeremy, I believe.
Yeah.
So my first question about the Sioux Loops, you had mentioned how the staggered departure times will allow Sioux Loops to achieve 15-minute between major destinations. My question is, will the one-hour service on evenings and weekends also have staggered departure times? And will that allow for 30 minutes between major destinations on evenings and weekends?
Thank you for your question. Yes, we, we are also recommending that the evenings and weekend service be staggered by, by departure times as well, to allow for, in that case, it would be 30, 30-minute frequency between major, major locations.
Excellent. I think that's great news, too. I would certainly agree with the report that reliability and frequency are the two major things that I hear from constituents on our bus routes. So for the staggered departure times, in your opinion, would that help with the current lay-by issues at the Dennis Street location with the congestion there? Or is it not going to influence?
Yes, it, it will directly influence that because you'll have a fraction of the number of buses there, you'll have half the number of buses there at, at any given time.
Great. And does the size of the current Dennis Street site still constrain the ability to increase routes in the future? Or in your estimation, does the staggered departure times create enough space to allow for future expansion at that site?
It would allow for future expansion at that site, yes.
Okay. And then just a couple more questions on the terminal location. I noticed that in your appendix there, I didn't realize the first recommendation to move the terminal to Huron Street actually came to city council in 2005. So we're going on 20 years that this has been a hot topic. So one of my questions is, and I appreciate the benefit of your experience in other communities. So in other communities of our size, similar to Sioux St. Marie, I'm thinking maybe like Peterboroughs, Guelphs, Sarnias, things like that, are transit terminals considered destinations in and of themselves?
That's a very good question. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for that question. Typically, transit terminals are, it's, it's a difficult one to answer. Transit and transportation altogether, people use transportation and use transit because they need to get to where they need to go. They're not using it because, because for the most part, they enjoy riding the bus, although there may be a few of us out there that, that do, such as myself. But, you know, as a result, the, these, these hubs are, you know, typically, typically transfer locations or are sited close to destinations. Oftentimes, they do play a dual role as a, as a transfer point, as well, as well as a access point to nearby destinations. Typically, I will say typically, in communities of Sioux's size, as well as larger, unless there's a, a strong and compelling reason, typically, sort of, hubs for systems are located close to major destinations, such as downtowns or major malls. In this case, while 111 Huron is still technically within downtown, it is noted that, that it is, you know, a distance away from shops and services. That issue, I would say, in this case, however, is mitigated significantly as a result of the route redesign, which allows for continual 15-minute service in the daytime and 30-minute service in the off-peak through along Queen and Bay Streets. So still maintaining that, that, that strong service into the downtown. I know, sort of danced around the question a little bit, but I hope, I hope, I'm happy to take any follow-up question on that as well, if there is.
I, I think you did make an interesting point, which leads into just my final question or thought, which is that when you're changing something as complex as the transit system, it seems to me pretty reasonable and pretty wise to change one thing at a time to see how, how the system adapts. And so from your perspective, do you think it would make sense to adopt the Sioux Loops first and then do a final reexamination of the terminal location? Or do you think that it would be better to do one big change all at once?
That's a very interesting question. I, you know, our, our analysis and, and our recommendation with the launch of the Sioux Loop system in summer 2026 will effectively mean, you know, that the system will be based around the Dennis Street terminal for the foreseeable future. You know, any type of construction, design and construction at the new terminal will take a period of three, three to four years, likely at minimum. So the system will be operating based, based out of Dennis Street for, sort of, at minimum three to four years before it can be switched over. There may be, I, I appreciate the line of question that, you know, perhaps, you know, there, 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 there may be logic to waiting until the implementation of the system before making further decisions on whether or not to relocate the terminal, and I can appreciate that. You know, I think that from, you know, from the perspective of, of, of relocating the terminal, even if that decision were to be made, however, that the route network of the Sioux Loop system does provide that connectivity, again, through the downtown, which I, I think would mitigate most, most concerns that would come with, with the relocation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your answers.
Sure.
And my final comment, Mr. Mayor, would just be that, for me, the decision on the downtown terminal really comes down to cost. There's not a lot of good service system reasons to or not to between the two locations. And the fact of the matter is, is we have a number here saying we're going to save over $3 million by relocating it, and that's why I, I think staff's recommendation is the correct one. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Dufour. Councillor Kinnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have questions for our presenter, Mr. Finkelmann.
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Finkelmann. I wanted to ask a follow-up question on the 49% that did not want to relocate the bus terminal. Did you cross-reference that in your data collections with users versus non-user answers?
Through the mayor to, to the councillor, no, we did not.
Okay. I, I think that would be an interesting piece of data and reveal who wants to move it and who doesn't want to move it. I think that might be helpful for our council to make a future decision on that. The second thing I wanted to ask about was your riderships and the fares that we were, you said that our bus passes are heavily discounted.
Mm-hmm.
And in your professional opinion, if we do need to raise fares or increase the cost of the bus pass, where would it have to be to be able to support our transit system?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor. Raising fares is always a very complicated decision process. There are a variety of reasons why systems will choose to price their fare products as they, as they price them. Through our review here, we noted that compared to other systems, there are some deep discounts that are provided. It doesn't necessarily mean that Sioux Transit is wrong in providing these discounts. As a recommendation coming out of the study, we do recommend a more thorough review of, of, of fares as, as part of next steps. It, it might very well be understood at the end of the day that, that the fare, the fare savings in, 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 in certain fare offerings are, are, are well attuned to the needs of the community, in which case, that's great. There, there are, there are some, obviously, there are some risks involved with, you know, raising, raising fares such as, such as monthly passes. There, there are deep discounts on the, on the monthly passes. But, you know, those, those, those challenges, I, I think really do need to be evaluated in the context of, of what's going on more broadly in the community, in terms of employment rates, in terms of the sort of income distribution of individuals and of families, and broader economic trends that are impacting your community.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Mayoni. So I just wanted to ask, we were provided a graph with ridership from 2019 to 2024, and I was wondering, I didn't ask ahead of time, but if you know what the deficit of the transit system was between or for those, each of those years?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Kinnick. So I don't have the data in front of me for each one of those years. Typically, I believe 72% of the 72% to 75% finance may be able to confirm. You realize heavily is the taxpayers that cover that cost. So I believe we're at about a $9 million net expenditure per year. So it's $8 million to taxpayers.
So because you don't have those numbers in front of you, just a question that I'd like to answer after emails would be, from 2019, when our ridership was at, like, a very high, to now 2024, I'd like to see what the deficit was at that time when the ridership, and 2024 when the ridership was almost the same.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Kinnick, is that something that you'd like me to provide to you afterwards?
Yes.
Yeah, of course, I can definitely do that.
And then through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Finkelmann again. I just wanted to ask you, with a city our size, there's been many, lots of talk in, in other municipalities across Canada about coming into a transit death spiral. So what would be some creative ways we can avoid this without just raising fares for the riders?
May I ask a question for clarification? When you describe a transit death spiral, what, what, what are you referring to?
When the, when the costs are exceeding the revenues in the, of the ridership? To an unsustainable point, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for the question. I, I have some, if I can find, just give me one second here, because I have some interesting statistics that I think might help answer this question. Just give me one, one minute. So the, according to data from 2023, the city of Sioux St. Marie has a transit revenue cost ratio of 25%. That means that 25% of the cost, the full cost of transit is being paid for through fares. The other 75% is not, is not being paid for through fares. That, that number in 2023 corresponded to about $62 of municipal operating contribution per person. What's interesting is, when we look at Sioux St. Marie's peers, this revenue cost ratio for Sioux Transit is, 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 is sort of, sort of in the middle of the pack, meaning that, that you're, you're not, you're not necessarily ahead of the game in terms of people paying their own way to use their services, trans services, and you're not really behind the game either. You're, you're, you're sort of in the middle. When it comes to transit, it, it's always a delicate balance because, you know, there's, 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 there's sort of a, a, a combination of, of, of different riders that are there. There are, there are people who need to use the bus as their only means of getting around, and then there are people that are often referred to in the industry as choice riders that may choose to use transit. As a result, transit, especially in mid-sized communities, can, can be considered a social service to a large extent, and that's sort of indicative and reflective of those revenue cost ratios. One of the things, I think, to avoid a death spiral or further increase in costs is to try to figure out how to, how to use your resources in a, in a manner that is more efficient. You guys serve about 23 rides per service hour. Again, it's fairly well in the middle of the pack, but there, there are ways that you could boost that. And I think moving forward to a Sioux Loops model, Sioux Loops, again, is trying to use the same pool of resources. We're not asking for further funding. We're trying to use the same pool of resources in a more efficient way that, that addresses what the, what the public and what riders are telling us are their core priorities: frequency, improved reliability, improved route directness. So if we take those service hours and we reinvest them in a, in a way that's more aligned with, 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 with what people need from the transit system... in a, in a way that's more aligned with, 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 with what people need from the transit system, it's more likely that more people, more of those choice riders, might choose to use the system. And it's also more likely that perhaps those individuals who may not take a trip on transit now because it's just simply not efficient for them may choose to, to take transit. And that in turn should help lift you, lift you up in terms of, in terms of riders. So sort of a roundabout answer to you, but, but I think that, you know, again, a, a, a better utilization of your existing resources is, 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 is a solution to, to, you know, not, to, to the death spiral, as you, as you say. And, and, and I think our approach that, that we're recommending here, which does take a, a cost neutral approach, does try to avoid the idea that throwing money at a, at a, at, at the system is, is, is the key solution to solving issues. We look at it differently. Let's redo what we have so that we can make it better for people with the same, with the same amount of resources and the same number of vehicles.
Thank you for that answer. And just one more question to you, Mr. Finkelmann. Out here in our summary of service changes, you have a plan that was anticipated over the next 10 years where you don't, could you just explain how you came up with the operating cost to be relatively stable for 10 years?
Sure. Thank you for that question. It's a very important question. It's a very important comment to clarify. So we, we are not anticipating growth in, in system service hours over the next 10 years. We note that Sault Ste. Marie has, has, has grown and the growth in population has resulted in growth in ridership. That said, we also note that economic circumstances and broader federal limitations around migration have changed the context a bit. And as a result, we are anticipating and planning for service hours to continue as they are. The costs that we're seeing there are reflective of that, and the costs are noted in consistent $20, $25. So we have not risen those costs due to inflation. Of course, in terms of real dollars in the day, they, they, they will need to be interpreted through, through a lens of inflation. But in terms of what's being represented, we are representing those costs in terms of $20, $25 constant dollars.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Thank you, councillor Kinnick. Councillor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment. The recommendations from Ms. Mione, I totally agree with one, two, three, four, and five, but it's the sixth one that be directed to revisit the relocation of the downtown terminal and bring it to budget in a future year. Do you require a resolution to remove that? And a new resolution brought forward?
I think it depends on your objective, councillor Bruni. If you want to prevent staff from reviewing the relocation of the terminal, that would be the option to take. The alternative is, I think it's drafted in such a way that even if it passes, council would have an opportunity at a future date to turn down the relocation of the downtown terminal. Although I do recognize that that would involve some wasted work between, you know, tomorrow and whenever that recommendation comes back to council.
What would be the recommendation from you or everybody else?
Well, I think staff would recommend that we proceed with their motion. I, I mean, I've, you know, we're on an hour and a half of this discussion at this point. It has all centered around the downtown terminal with, with the exception of maybe 10 minutes. So, you know, obviously, that is the issue that is in play here. I don't want to see the, the terminal relocated. I think for, you know, there's, there's a number of comments that I could make or questions I could ask that would support my position, which sounds like it's probably your position as well. I think we are generally, from what I'm gathering, all in agreement on one through five. So we could, you know, at your, at your discretion, councillor Bruni, move to remove number six out of here. If you had a seconder for that and then it'd be voted on and, or we could leave it and then at some point at a, at a future budget meeting, council could approve or reject the downtown terminal. Do you have a procedural question? Go ahead.
Your seconder, councillor Bruni.
So that's a motion to remove number six from the resolution. Recommendation number six from the resolution. The amending motion, Madam Clerk?
Just give me two minutes.
I think if that's done, perhaps Tom, or Mr. Ver, sorry. Also a reminder for council, please refer to staff by their position titles or last names. Mr. Ver could tell us if we do that, then staff would have to come back with a next step on the terminal, I suppose, at some future council meeting. Because there are problems with the Denistree terminal that need to be corrected if, if we don't proceed with the move, correct?
Through you, Mr., to you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. So if council chose to remove that item, we would have to come back and look at the, the costing and recommendations for the existing terminal. I think the other thing to note is that we would have to, currently, the 111 Huron project has been approved by ISIP. So if this doesn't move ahead, we would have to come up with a new project, then reapply or get approval from ISIP on a new project and that, it will be up to ISIP whether they approve that project.
So, Madam Clerk?
I have a motion by councillors Bruni and Hollingsworth resolved that the words be directed to revisit the relocation of the downtown terminal and bring it to budget in a future year be removed. And I will open that to vote.
Okay. Just, I'll let councillor Bruni speak in favor. You've seconded. Do you have a procedural question? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to do a friendly amendment. Do I wait until this is voted on to do another friendly amendment to the original resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we have to deal with the amending motion on the floor first.
Eliminate this from the vote?
Cancel? Yeah, I can.
Councillor Bruni?
Yeah.
We, so on an amending motion, one councillor speaking in favor, one against. Councillor Dufour, I saw you put your hand up first. So are you speaking? Am I okay to go to you to speak against the amending motion? Okay, councillor Bruni, go ahead.
Yeah, the only reason why is presently, if you're looking at the, the, the presentation and the costs of it, you're looking at up to 7.5 million, and this was done several years ago. So the cost for a new terminal could be exceeding, I'm not going to throw high numbers, but eight, nine million dollars possibility. I think right now we're not in that situation that we can. I know it says be directed to revisit the relocation of the downtown terminal and bring it to budget in a future year. I don't know which year that will be. Could be next year. So by completely eliminating that, then it'll be up to staff to come back with a report of what the present ter- terminal, what it requires and what the cost will be exactly. And I think we're basically protecting ourselves that I don't want it to come back here and say the terminal, the new terminal is going to be built and it's going to be passed by, by our councillors until we get a thorough report back on what the present terminal is required. And I know Ms. Mione did discuss a few items that need to be corrected there. And so basically, it's a cost factor for me. Thank you.
Okay, so procedurally on that, councillor Bruni, if you're looking for cost of staying and renovating or rebuilding or doing whatever to the current downtown Denistree terminal, that'll be a future motion you have to bring to direct staff to, to look at that. But this would be essentially just to eliminate Huron from the discussion.
Yes, and Mr. Ver did state that if we remove this line, he's going to come back to council with the cost of what's required for the, for the present terminal and what changes are required at what cost. Am I correct?
Through you, councillor Bruni, that is correct. I think though, the, the issue is with the removal, we would no longer be looking at 111 Huron. If I understood your comments, what you're looking for is the cost comparison.
No, no, I'm just, if I remove this, if we remove this, if it's voted on, then you'll come back with the cost of what the present terminal, what is needed to upgrade it, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni, correct. We would need to do that, given the deficiencies of the current terminal in order to have council make a decision on what they want to do with that terminal. I think in its current state, it, it's not sufficient to meet the AODA requirements and other building upgrades that are required.
Understandable. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bruni. Councillor Dufour?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ver. Removing item six to pass tonight, why would that remove it from future consideration in a future staff report?
I think there's the procedural issue of a motion defeated can't be reintroduced for a year, or I guess in this case, until after the next term, which is less than a year from now. So I'm not actually convinced, though, that this eliminates 111 Huron from the consideration altogether, given the vagueness of, of number six here. I, I get.
Six just says be directed to revisit and bring it forward to a budget in a future year.
Yeah.
Doesn't say never think of 111 Huron ever again.
I agree. Yeah, no, I, I, I don't disagree there.
I, I think that at the end of the day, what's the best case scenario for this council, for the community, is to have another dedicated cost comparison between the two options and a fulsome discussion given to that for a final decision.
Almost sounds, it almost sounds to me like, like despite the opposite sides of this motion you're advocating for, you and councillor Bruni agree on this issue.
I, I, I think so. And, and to councillor Bruni's point, I mean, my, my view on this is that it should be evaluated on cost. And my opinion from tonight's presentation, but also from my experience last term, is that the lowest op- cost option is to move the terminal because we saved $3 million. So it, it would have to, yeah, have a fulsome conversation between the two terminals again with updated costing since we last talked about it in '21 or '22. And that's fine. I think we can have that conversation in a future budget year or at a future time.
So just from what I'm hearing, you know, I think it, it probably, given what you're both saying, and then councillor Hollingsworth as well with your procedural clarifications, it probably makes sense, frankly, to take number six out, approve number five. We all, I think, generally agree on number five. And then ask for a motion to review the relocation of the downtown terminal as a cost comparison between 111 Huron and whatever needs to be done at Denistree to rebuild, refurbish, whatever. I think we've had a couple of kind of reports like that over the years, at least since 2021 or 2020, whenever it was that this kind of first surfaced on the council agenda, this iteration of it anyways. So I, I guess in that respect, I'm, I'm suggesting, if you want to see that, that we vote in favor of councillor Bruni's amendment, vote on the amended motion, and then a separate motion be brought at the next council meeting. Or I, I don't think there's any need to do that tonight necessarily.
Just as a final question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, was the intention of staff to bring the city's share of the Huron relocation to the 2026 budget deliberation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni, there is an allocation in the 2026 budget towards that project.
Is it in the, the supplementals or in the budget?
In, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Dufour, in the budget.
Will staff be able to bring that report back before we consider the budget then?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Dufour, no, we wouldn't be able to bring that report back in time. And to undertake the costing analysis for the current terminal will take some time to do, be some resources to do, obviously, to engage a, a consultant and architect to look at what is needed in the facility and then come back to council with that comparison. We do have funding that's approved for ISIP for 111 Huron. We would have to go back to them with a modification request if we were to do anything differently. And I don't know if they would be receptive to costing out two different projects in order to provide council with a comparison point. So that might be something the city would be on the hook for in order to engage a consultant to do the work for the Denistree terminal.
What my issue is, is we have the information on the Denistree terminal sitting right in front of us right here. It's, it's in this report from WSP and the appendices. Everything's been costed out and we saved $3 million by moving to Huron. So I don't, sure the new report will bring maybe some more updated numbers, but it's, it's all going to escalate at the same, same rate. Like, we know what saves more money. And at the end of the day, like, do we want to save money or do we want to invest in the impression of a terminal being a destination? For my part, I would rather save the money. I think that we have all of the information here. And I think that's also the reason why staff had that allocation in the budget for consideration this year.
Councillor Bruni, then councillor Vizwalan, then councillor Kaputo.
Dufour, those numbers, 2022. How can you put a, an accurate price tag on the renovations of the old terminal? And now?
Yeah, I, I think what we're really, we're going in a bit of a circle here. But the new information for staff on, on the budget, on the budget considerations here. Councillor Gardi just informed me, he's got his hand up as well. Thanks, councillor Gardi. I'll get to you right after councillor Kaputo. Yeah, well, I, I, I think that may, it may require some greater direction here. But let's go through some questions, see if we can land on a direction. Councillor Vizwalan?
Thank you. Just one question to Mr. Ver. Mr. Ver, if we delete item six from the motion, is that going to jeopardize our ISIP funding? Will you have to report that to the funder, to the feds?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Vizwalan. We have until 2023, or 2033 in order to spend the money, and that project is approved. So as of now, the project's approved by ISIP. So as long as we proceed with it, we can continue. But if we take some time to analyze another option, I, probably at our expense, it wouldn't be until that decision is made that we would notify ISIP that we were going in a different direction.
So we are at jeopardy of losing the funding?
No. Only if we make that ultimate decision and then go back to ISIP and say we're moving to another project and we ask for approval on a different project.
And the only project that's approved is 111 Huron?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Kaputo?
One comment. I just want everyone to understand, and maybe everyone does, but that the, moving the terminal to 111 Huron Street, even if the cost goes up, is still, well, sorry, I'll ask, I'll ask you, Mr. Ver. Even if the cost rises, is still 73.33% covered by ISIP. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Kaputo, that is correct.
Okay, so no matter what happens with costs going up or down, the city's share is still only 26.67%.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Kaputo, that is correct.
Okay. And then I was not on the previous council, so I, if I could ask a couple of questions about the current Denistree location. I heard people saying it's not AODA. it's not AODA, um, certified. Is it, maybe this is a question for Ms. Mione, um, is it possible to make Dennis Street AODA, uh, approved?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Caputo, um, the constraints at that location is the square footage in the area, right? So one of the big items that's required for full AODA compliance, and this is in discussions with the accessibility coordinator over the years, it's a fully universal accessible washroom with an adult change table. So the footprint of that location is limited, um, because we've also got the area that's required for the public, the concession, we would require, um, a private area for the operators who've got, you know, their lunch and their breaks are taken there. So that would be the biggest, um, constraint that we would have, and we would, as mentioned, we would require, um, engagement with a consultant to do a full evaluation and drawings for that to get proper costing.
And as it stands right now, the city's share of, um, renovating Dennis Street would be 100%. We, there would be no ISIP funding to do that?
So, as previously mentioned, the ISIP funding is approved, um, city's share 26.67% of the capital costs to relocate the terminal to 111 Huron Street. Should we change the scope and the initiative of that project, staff would have to submit a modification request to the investigative candidate infrastructure team, which should be reviewed both by the provincial and federal levels, and would need to be approved. There is the risk of losing that funding altogether. Um, we have had preliminary discussions with the province on that, and they were hesitant, but they couldn't make a confirmation either way, because it would require all of the details for that, um, type of a request.
And in this report, um, you outlined that safety was an issue at Dennis Street. Can you elaborate on that for me?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Caputo. So we do have safety concerns at the Dennis Street Terminal, um, similar to some other areas in the downtown. We are addressing them with additional security, so we have added security there in the morning and in the evenings. Um, to even make it more secure, we would require, you know, better cameras in that location with additional cameras, better lighting, um, it would be better to have a different layout for the buses, because there is some constraint in that area as well. So, no matter where we go, we would definitely require, um, proper security features to make sure that our staff and our passengers are comfortable and safe.
Okay, um, so just to recap, we may-
Counselor Caputo, just-
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so are we, are, so we would be at risk of losing the funding and paying 100% to stay at Dennis Street, and if we strike this, Mr. Vare?
That's a recap, but-
Okay.
And I don't think it's accurate, I I just want to clarify this, like, we've gotten approved for 73% of the funding to move it to Huron Street, but if council turns it down, we would have to reapply and could be approved for 73% of the funding if we, uh, wanted to rebuild or refurbish or do something on Dennis Street, but it's not a guarantee. But we could be approved for 73%.
To you, Mr. Mayor, we could be approved or we cannot, yes, so there's the opportunity that we could be as well, or we could the other way.
Counselor Gardi.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna be pretty frank and try to be as respectful as I can be, I have no idea what we're talking about here. The, like, this, this conversation started, I think you referenced it four or five years ago, uh, potentially, um, you know, we have WSA SP do this study for us, they come back with a way to kind of optimize our, our transit, make it more, um, user-friendly, make it, make it, uh, easier to use, uh, for the residents that use it, um, and modernize it, quite frankly. And then we're, we're, we're sitting here talking about getting back a report for a building that, I know what the report's gonna say, it's gonna say it's gotta be knocked down and rebuilt. Everybody around this table should know, if they do not know already, that that facility, the physical plant of that building, is an embarrassment to our community, quite frankly, that it is long overdue that the people who ride those buses have a facility where they could access all of the amenities they need to access, and that they feel safe. So we're, in my mind, delaying the inevitable. Counselor Dufour outlined it quite well in terms of, in terms of the savings, but, you know, when all this went on a few years ago, the only people who called me with concerns about relocating the bus terminal were some people who had never ridden a bus in 40 years, to be quite frank. I haven't heard directly from the people who ride buses, but I can tell you, when we talked about this three or four years ago, having not been at the bus station for probably 20, 25 years, I went in there, and it was an embarrassment then, three years hence, I'm sure it is now. We need to move forward on this, and I won't be supporting any report to do anything other than the thorough, you know, the, the thorough application we made to ISIP and got, uh, approved on. Um, that building, that building, it's gonna cost a fortune to build a new building, the footprint's gonna be too big for that piece of property, and we should just do what we've been talking about doing for four hours, for four years, and not what we've been talking about over the course of the last two hours, because I'm completely confused as to what everybody around this table wants to do and why they want to do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Gardi. Okay. We all agree on numbers one through five, so I'm suggesting, um, that we vote on Counselor Bruny's motion, which has been thoroughly debated, as to whether or not to remove number six from, uh, the direction, and that is open before us. So resolve that the words be directed to revisit the location for the downtown terminal and bring it to a future budget year, be removed. So if you, um, don't want to support moving the terminal, you would vote in favor of this. If you want to support moving the terminal, you would vote against this. All in favor? Three, four, that is defeated, so it stays in the original motion.
Did Counselor Spina-
I'm not sure if he's still on. Counselor Spina, you still there?
Yep, I put it through, uh, East Drive, if it went up.
Oh, okay.
I do have it. Um, so the amendment is defeated, and voting in favor were Mayor Schumaker, Counselor Hollingsworth, Counselor Bruny, Counselor Kinnick, voting against, Counselor Spina, Counselor Dufour, Counselor Vezo Allen, Counselor Caputo, Counselor Zagordo, Counselor Gardi, and Counselor Scott.
Okay, so then we are on the main motion. You have an amendment.
Correct. Um, I have a friendly amendment, um, basically, um, be directed to review adding community bus services to all senior retirement homes. Um, as we heard tonight, um, majority of the retired-
Hang on, don't get into your comments.
Oh, please, let me, everyone else commented, here we go now.
Is there a second or for that amendment? Counselor Bruny, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so that's what I'd like to amend and add on, please.
Okay. So this would be an additional recommendation, it seems like, Madam Clerk?
Expand the community bus.
To include all retirement homes.
And I would probably just suggest and report back on the cost of doing so at a future council meeting? Is that fine, to add that wording? Are you agreeable to add that wording?
Thank you.
Resolved in an additional recommendation to expand the community bus to include all retirement homes and report back to council regarding the cost to do so be added. That's Counselors Hollingsworth and Bruny. So, ano- another amending motion by Counselors Hollingsworth and Bruny resolved in an additional recommendation to expand the community bus to include all retirement homes and report back to council regarding the cost to do so be added.
So this would be, we're just voting on the amendment, this is to add it to the main motion. So all in favor? Okay, now there are seven recommendations. Anyone else want to step up to the plate? Since we're all huge baseball fans.
You voted in favor.
Yes.
So that carries unanimously?
Okay, now we're on the main motion, as amended by Counselor Hollingsworth and Counselor Bruny. This is to go through and approve all seven recommendations. We've discussed it ad nauseam, so I don't think there's any requirement to discuss it any further.
Just give me a second.
Counselor Hollingsworth, are you agreeable to adding the word, not just retirement, but nursing and retirement homes, which are technically different?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, ask a clarification question, please. Does it presently go to the senior citizens' center? Do we know?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, um, you're talking about the Active Living Center on Bay Street?
Correct.
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Hey.
Okay.
A motion by Counselors Dufour and Gardi resolved that the report from the Director of Community Services dated November 3, 2025, concerning the transit optimization and terminal relocation study be received, and that staff be directed to implement the new route network referred to as Sioux Loops, be directed to return to fixed route service on weekend evenings in place of on-demand and discontinue on-demand service with the launch of Sioux Loops, be directed to expand the home-to-hub service to provide in place with the launch of Sioux Loops, be directed to explore software options to improve scheduling of paribus clients, be directed to review fare structure and bring it to budget in a future year, expand the community bus to include all nursing and retirement homes, and report back to council regarding the cost to do so, and be directed to revisit the relocation of the downtown terminal and bring it to budget in a future year.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. I think unanimously.
It's unanimous.
Goodness gracious. That brings us to consent at 7:15 PM. Counselor Hollingsworth wants to pull something from consent, what number?
Um, thank you, um, through you, Mayor, may we pull, duh, 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 one second here. What's the number, the hour again? I'm just grabbing it.
Oh, it's, uh, 7.5.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay. So, anyone have any matters on consent? Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 7.9, and it's not going to be any questions.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's just gonna be a giant thank you to staff for the very thorough report back, um, for the traffic study that, uh, I know many people in Bayview and the surrounding community are very happy to see, um, the results of. Uh, I, it was unfortunate that there were some collisions there, and I wanted to just point that, uh, point that out, that that, that's not the intent of these studies, um, but I'm very happy and very pleased to see that the, uh, the suggestion is to, uh, keep the lights, and, um, and, and I'm sure people will appreciate that next Halloween for additional safety, and, uh, yeah, thanks to staff for the great report.
Thank you, Counselor Scott. Anyone else on 7.9? I wanted to, um, commend staff on 7.9 as well, and, um, this is, you know, I, I've, uh, made a campaign in previous elections on removing unnecessary traffic signals, uh, and this is one of the ones that I brought a motion to see about, uh, removing, and I think this is the right way to go about it when you do. So we had traffic studies done on this intersection, I might have my dates off by a year or two here, but in 2015 and in 2020, and both times, this intersection fell below the threshold of where a light would have been required. So, uh, that is the basis on which I brought a motion forward to have this light removed. Staff recommended studying it, we did study it, and the, uh, data that was, uh, obtained throughout the summer, three times, I think, throughout this past year, was that the threshold is now all but met. I think it was about a percentage off of where it would need to be, with future growth anticipated in the area, expected to put it over the threshold. So this is the right way to do it. I, I, I want to, um, you know, note that unnecessary traffic signals should be removed, and there should be traffic signals where they are needed, and this is one where the data showed it was unnecessary, and now shows it's needed. So I think it's a completely, um, reasonable, uh, recommendation to, to proceed with, and it just, uh, continues on this ever-changing effort, uh, to get the traffic signalization right in our community, based on what traffic patterns were and what they are today. So this is fulsome and thorough report, and I appreciate it. Counselor Scott, still on you?
I'm good, thank you.
Oh, wait, on 7.9? No, no, Counselor Scott's still on, uh, on other items on consent that you've got. None, okay, sorry, then Counselor Vezo Allen.
Uh, my question's just on 7.3, um, third quarter financials, um, either to Michelle or Mr. Facy. In terms of the deficit, um, we've got an estimate at year-end at 2.75 to 3.25 million. Could you kindly highlight in your report, um, how many times we've been in a deficit situation, and how we were looking at funding this deficit at year-end? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I haven't quite been at the city for too long, but I believe it's the first deficit in about 20 years. Uh, in terms of funding the deficit, we do have a, an amount budgeted for in 2025 from the Tax Stabilization Reserve, partially funding the deficit. We have an amount in the Winter Control Reserve of about 900,000 that will be funding this, um, part of this deficit, as well as commitments within our contingency reserve to fund the remainder. Um, so none of the deficit will be on future taxes, it'll be funded from city reserves, um, for 2025, should it materialize at year-end.
Okay, and in terms of that deficit, what are the, you know, three biggest factors that are contributing to our, our deficit that we're looking at the end of the year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The two main factors are winter control and the, uh, and the, the winter season that we, um, that we're impacted by, as well as the police's year-end position, uh, and, and anticipated deficit, I believe 1.5 million dollars to the end of the year.
Okay. At any one given time, if there is a surplus in the police services budget, would that surplus then come back to us in terms of us having to fund this deficit in this year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further.
Except there won't be a surplus this year.
No, I know.
Right, but in future years, I think the MOU goes for, uh, what is it, three years or five years?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and Counselor Yest, it was a three-year MOU that we had, and it was indicated, police agreed, that if they had future surpluses, it would go back to pay the deficit.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Hollingsworth on 7.3? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, through you, Mayor, to, um, Michelle, or actually, sorry, um, her colleague.
Mr. Facy.
Thank you. Um, can you please explain, what is a long-term grant? What is it used for? I think I saw something.
Through, yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. We received, um, funds for the Long-Term Care Grant, um, for the past number of years, if I remember correctly, and we never really, we never really received an update of when that funding was to, um, materialize in perpetuity, so it was an unbudgeted grant that we received. So, um, we didn't know if it was gonna continue or when it was gonna stop, so we didn't budget for that grant, and we considered ourselves lucky when we did get the funding. Uh, so this year is the last year, and we've got, received confirmation, uh, confirmation that this is the last year we're receiving it, so it's, it's adding, so it's, it's reducing the city's deficit for 2025, but it won't be an option in 2026.
Okay, so help me understand, um, a little bit more about, so, how can I say? That's a positive, we have received it, and it sounds like we just got notice that we have received it, and it's just for 2025, is that what I'm hearing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we've received it for a number of years, however, we didn't know it was going to continue. It is an unbudgeted revenue we're, we are receiving in 2025.
Okay, and how much is that, did you say?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, approximately 485,000, if I remember correctly.
About 480, okay, and so, um, okay. And what can we use that for again? Help me understand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe there's any eligibility criteria. I think it was to offset expenses for long-term care homes. And that's, that's why we're able to use it for basically anything, because we don't have to report back on it, or there's no agreement on it.
Okay.
Sorry, just add some history, as Steve was, as he indicated, he wasn't here when I started receiving it. This was a one-time mitigation grant because certain long-term care homes that were nonprofits that used to be paying property taxes were exempt. So this was to mitigate that loss of property tax revenue over the years. But every year, it was a surprise whether we got it or not, because they always said it was one time. So we got it one time for about six or seven years. And as Steve stated, we just got mitigation, our notification in 2025 that we will no longer be receiving it.
Okay, thank you, very important. So if I understand correctly, it is to offset those not-for-profits where they are not paying us taxes? It's not used for anything else?
It was to provide the property tax revenue that we were no longer receiving. So as Mr. Facy stated, it is not, it's not to be used for anything specific. It was just part of your tax levy to reduce it for that lost tax revenue.
Okay, thank you. Couple other questions. I also noted in the report that it was said that we have a higher-than-anticipated revenue from Ontario Lottery and Gaming Corporation of about 480,000. And is that strictly from our local casino, or is that from another source?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just a little bit of background, we have a budget of 1.3 million for OLG revenue, and we're anticipating around 1.7, 1.8 million. We're unsure if the revenue share is as a result from online or from other revenue sources. We just get a notification from OLG of what our share is.
Okay, okay, I was just curious, okay, thanks for that clarification, and so, Mr. Facy, so as we talked about tonight, at the moment, our deficit is about 2.75 to 3.25 million. Is that my understanding, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct, that's the cumulative effect of city operations and our outside business partners.
Okay, can you clarify that we've been in the past fortunate to receive a dividend from the PUC? Is that something we can no pundit in a bank on? Or is that a discretionary dividend up to the PUC?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, if you're referring to special dividends that are called by PUC that we get every couple of years, that's not in the budget, and we will, we do not know if we're going to receive them until the PUC board calls those dividends, which probably won't happen until sometime in, usually around May of, after their year-end. So we won't hear it till next year.
Okay, okay, thank you, so unfortunately, we can't incorporate that idea.
No, there are standard dividends that we get every year that is already in the budget, as well as interest that we receive from the PUC. Those are, have always been in the budget, and they don't change yearly.
Okay, and for clarification, just on past history, I think in the past, I could be wrong, I think our mayor in the past has asked the PUC to consider a special dividend to help us out in the past. I'm just trying to figure out, remembering the history.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, we really don't have any kind of control over whether they call a special dividend or not. It usually is dependent upon their consolidated operations and how well they've been doing, and whether or not that they have funds available to share with the city as the shareholder, the sole shareholder of that organization. PUC has reported on a regular basis to council and has provided information as to the structure and the changes and the growth that they're receiving, and they have indicated that hopefully the city will also share in special dividends going forward.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Mayor, to Mr. Ver. Going to my colleague's question, just adding on to her question, there are still some projects that are outstanding, such as the Algen Street Improvement piece that has not been awarded yet, and that's something that we're going to discuss tonight. Is your team at the moment looking at all the projects that may be awarded to potentially put on hold? Mr. Ver, you know, have you been started, or can we put some other projects on hold? And if so, will you be coming to the budgets meetings with a list of projects that were slated to potentially be awarded, but maybe should not be awarded, so we can make some savings?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, the cost-saving initiatives that staff looked at were based on operating expenses for the year. The capital projects that were approved and were planned, we've been moving ahead with those, because really, you're just pushing those projects down, which are needed further down the road, and the costs of these projects don't tend to go down. So our effort has been, or sorry, focus has been looking at operational savings, but not postponing those needed capital projects.
Okay, just for clarification, out of those needed capital projects, I can appreciate, obviously, they're needed, but I'm sure there's some capital projects that are not really required. Are we going to receive a list during the budget debate of those that may be not critical?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, the council will receive a full list of the capital projects we have planned for 2026. And certainly, there's a careful vetting process with staff in bringing capital projects forward. There's a lot of consideration for which projects move ahead based on priority and need, and I would suggest that staff are not bringing forward any projects that aren't needed.
Okay, fair enough, and final question. Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Facy. Hydrant rental, can you elaborate, what do you mean by hydro rental? Is that we rent from the PUC?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct, that's our contract with the PUC for hydrant capital replacement as well as operating requirements.
Okay, thank you, and the only reason I'm asking these questions is that for me, this information is important for the 2026 budget debate, having the answers. So thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Counselor Hollingsworth, Counselor Dufour?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to draw a little bit of attention to our tax stats and the net assessment growth. We've had an excellent year when it comes to residential and multi-residential, totaling up to 3.5% so far, which in any other year I've ever been on council would be some pretty incredible news. You know, typically, we've struggled to break the 1% mark in a lot of years, and here we have 3.5% growth in the residential and multi-residential, and it's just, hopefully, a bit of encouragement, even though I do see that a lot of that was negated by some decreases we've had in commercial and industrial. As some of those properties come back to being taxable, as I trust and hope they will, we'll start to see some of the benefit of this year's growth, and hopefully, this year's growth is, you know, even though we're going to be in a tough budget year this year, I do think it's a really positive sign that we're seeing that kind of growth in residential and multi-residential, and I'm going to trust that it means some good things for the community next year, and hopefully, we don't have that same corresponding deficit eating it up on us. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Counselor Dufour. Others on 7.3? Seeing none, Counselor Bezoalan, other items on consent?
That was it, thank you.
Counselor Hollingsworth, items on consent?
I didn't, I'm, can't even talk today. Item 7.6 Cemetery Bylaw. Through you, Your Worship, to Ms. Malone. Lots of questions for you tonight. Happy to see that there's reference in your report with regards to natural burial. For the viewers at home, can you please define what is a natural burial?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. A natural burial is one that is done without any impact to the ground, the groundwater, or the emissions. So essentially, it could not be an individual who chose to be cremated, because there's fuel and emissions that are the outcome from that. It cannot be somebody that is typically buried in a casket with a cement vault, because there could be impacts to the groundwater from the varnish coming off. So essentially, it is any, it is a burial that is completely natural with the body, and then a biodegradable shroud around them. So there is no impact to the environment in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, so it's my understanding that it could also be, basically, when you say natural, it sounds like it's environmentally friendly. From my understanding, it involves where the body is in a biodegradable container potentially. Could be a shroud or a simple wooden casket, or even just put into the dirt itself? Is that basically correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and so when I read your report, I believe you're asking for a couple of changes to the bylaw. One, to include a natural burial. Two, if I'm reading this correctly, with regards to the current tree situation, that you're suggesting that we only plant cedar trees, and two, at per gravesite?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, yes, so it is recommended to only plant cedar trees, which is the current practice right now, if you're down at the funerals, because there's less impact in regards to the roots to affect the markers. And what was the second piece?
And so I just want to verify that, so currently, those cedar trees, they are trimmed, obviously, by us?
Yes, the city maintains them.
Okay, and there's no other cost to the family requesting to have the two trees planted?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, no, the city maintains them once they're planted.
Okay, and in the last piece, and then I believe that the other tweak to the bylaw is to have the indigenous area for, is that correct, burial?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, yes, that is correct, that is another piece of the bylaw amendment.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, anyone else on 7.6? Counselor Hollingsworth, other items on consent?
No.
Counselor Garty?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, upon reflection, if we could pull 711, I would appreciate that. I declared a conflict at the time when the Environmental Sustainability Committee considered funding requests of the Green Initiatives Fund, because I'm on the Conservation Authority, but just as an extra redundancy, I'm going to declare conflict on 711. Sorry about that.
Okay, thanks, no problem. Anyone else with items on consent?
Counselor Gardi, myself, are also in the Conservation Authority, along with Counselor Bruny, so, and also Counselor Ron. So I want to say thank you for reminding us that we also have a conflict, if that's fair to say.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Items on consent, yes.
Just for my colleagues' sake, I think I'm the only one declaring the conflict. I don't think they feel that they should have to. I'm on both board, I'm on the, I'm on, I'm on the CA and the, and the Environmental Sustainability Committee, so that's why I brought mine forward. That being said, people make their own decisions, but just, just putting that out there, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and yeah, it is each counselor's decision ultimately, which is reviewable, but whether or not you declare your own conflict. So Counselor Gardi, thanks for giving your reasons on that, and we'll note that conflict. Counselor Hollingsworth, are you declaring a conflict or not?
No, I won't.
Counselor Garty?
I will declare.
Counselor Bruny? Okay. So we will vote on that separately, in any event. We will have a vote then on the consent agenda, Madam Clerk? Accepting. While you're doing that, I'll just encourage folks to submit nominations for the Medal of Merit. We have a Medal of Merit bylaw update on the agenda today, and I believe the call for nominations will go out tomorrow. And nominations will be extended if this passes until November 30th. So there is about, what is that, four weeks to get nominations in from yesterday. So please consider deserving suit.
I have a motion by Counselors Bezoalan and Scott, resolved that all the items listed under date November 3, 2025, Agenda Item 7, Consent Agenda, Save and Accept, Agenda Items 7.5, 7.7, and 7.11 be approved as recommended.
All in favor? That carries. Exists 7.5? Counselor Hollingsworth, you asked to pull this?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mayor, just grabbing it. Okay. Through you, Mayor, to Ms. Karen Merlow, but don't, no.
Probably ask the questions of Mr. Romeo.
Okay. Mr. Romeo, can you just explain why this particular project needs to go forward?
Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, in recent years, working in the downtown on Queen Street and the design of East Street in the last several months, we found that downtown streets are more complicated. There's 120-year-old sanitary sewer on Algen. There's a vast array of underground infrastructure that we have to coordinate with, as well as streetscaping to match the downtown initiatives, as well as tying in with the waterfront. We've found that, you know, the typical three to six months of design time isn't, wasn't, wasn't cutting it. So get an early start, get the design ready, and hit the ground running in 2027.
Okay, so in your professional opinion, it sounds like it's more the underground infrastructure that is decaying, that needs immediate attention?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, if the question is about prioritizing, then yeah, 120-year-old sanitary sewer is ready to be replaced, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, that's all.
Thanks, Counselor Hollingsworth, I did, you pulling this and asking questions on 7.3 did prompt me to wonder whether or not, if we defer the approval of this until January, does the 176,000, or whatever, 170, is it 76? 177,000 end up as a surplus in this year, and then come out of next year's capital budget? No, why not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it would not affect our surplus, because this is, it'll just go into the capital reserve. So it'll just be uncommitted funds in the capital reserve, doesn't change anything.
There's the funds from the capital budget just go into the capital reserve if unspent, okay.
Correct.
All right, so it makes no difference. Okay, thank you. Mr. Romeo and Michelle. Any other questions on 7.5?
No, that's a great clarification, thank you.
Anyone else on 7.5? Okay, we can have a vote on that? Well, you haven't read.
There are two, there's the
Oh, there's the
Resolution to the Worth of Work, and then there's the delegated bylaw under bylaws. I have a motion by Counselors Bezoalan and Scott, resolved that the report of the manager of purchasing dated November 3, 2025, concerning preliminary design, Algen Street improvements be received, and that the work be awarded to ACOM Canada Limited for 177,615 plus HST.
One favor? That carries. Okay, that brings us to?
We accept it, item.
7.7.
Counselor Gardi still in the meeting?
He's there or not there? He's there.
Did you vote in the affirmative, Counselor Gardi? I think it's absent.
Yeah.
Agenda Item 7.7 was accepted on account of Counselor Scott's conflict. That's the Northern Community Center lease agreement with ADSB. However, there is not a motion under 7.7, there'll be a bylaw under the bylaw section. And that takes us to also accepted Agenda Item 7.11, the Community Development Fund Green Initiatives Program applications. I have a motion by Counselors Dufour and Scott, resolved that the report of the Sustainability Coordinator dated November 3, 2025, concerning Community Development Fund Green Initiatives Program Applications, 2025 Q1 intake be received, and that the recommendations of the Environmental Sustainability Committee to support the two projects as follows. Sustainability Committee to support the two projects as follows be approved. Sault Ste. Marie Region Conservation Authority Environmental Monitoring Project, $11,225, and Arch Hospice LED Lighting Phase Two Project, $3,250.
Councillor, any questions? All in favor? That carries.
Councillors?
He had the seat for his last conflict. Well, there he is.
And that will bring us to Agenda eight point eight point one, the Community Skills Training and Employment Coalition Advisory Committee. There's a motion by councillors Dufour and Scott, resolved that the report of the Deputy CAO Community Development Enterprise Services dated November 3, 2025, concerning the Community Skills Training and Employment Coalition Advisory Committee be received, and that a member of council be appointed to the committee. I understand that councillor Garty is interested in serving on the committee.
Councillor Garty, do we have that right?
That is right.
Okay. Other questions on this? Thank you for your service, councillor Garty. All in favor? That carries. Open on your Escribe in case you haven't voted there yet.
Just be known, Nicole?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Yep.
And Agenda item eight point eight point two, the Environment, Environmental Sustainability Committee, motion by councillors Vezel, Allen, and Scott, resolved that Stevie Lutzey be appointed to the Environmental Sustainability Committee from November 3, 2025 to December 31, 2026.
All in favor? That carries.
And eight point eight point three, the Sault Ste. Marie Public Library Board, a motion by councillors Dufour and Garty, resolved that David Natchin be appointed to the Sault Ste. Marie Library Board from November 3, 2025 to December 31, 2026.
All in favor? That carries.
I agree unanimously. That will bring us to Agenda item nine point two, the Halloween Tour Bus, a motion by councillors Kaputo and Garty, whereas several Sault Ste. Marie residents have invested immense time, financial commitment, and effort to make their houses spooky destinations for all to enjoy throughout the Halloween season, with their greatest reward being the ability to share their passion for Halloween with children and adults from all over the city. And whereas not all residents have access to a vehicle to visit these incredible attractions, and whereas providing bus doors would be a greener alternative to those residents who do have access to a vehicle, reducing the number of cars on residential streets and lessening the traffic impacts, and whereas the City of Sault Ste. Marie offers services such as the Adventure Bus Best for Kids program and Point Dishing Beach Bus to improve access and equity for all residents of our city to enjoy some of our most beloved attractions. And whereas these bus programs provide a safe, family-friendly way for residents to explore attractions and community events throughout the city, and whereas introducing Halloween tour buses could provide an opportunity to celebrate local culture, support community organizations, and encourage participation in seasonal activities. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to return with a costing and operational report on the feasibility of implementing a city bus Halloween tours beginning in 2026 for up to five nights prior to Halloween, including staffing requirements, changing routes yearly depending on which houses are declared winners in the city's Halloween Spirit Awards, as well as potential sponsorship opportunities or community partners.
Councillor Kaputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought I would add a little extra to what transit's already doing. No, just kidding. This year, I got to go visit a lot of the top five homes. As everyone knows, I have, I have a young daughter, and the amount of effort that these people have put into these, their front yards, their backyards, 129 Murphy actually constructed an entire haunted house in their backyard, and it was super scary. My, my daughter made me go through it twice, and it was scary both times. Promenade, 1649 Queen East, they were all so amazing. And each time we got to stop, these folks were actually outside, and they, all they wanted was to see the reactions of the children. They loved getting the compliments from parents or grownups that were there. And my residents on Promenade, which is in Ward Three, we had an extensive conversation, and Brenda and Dawn Bedard, they are, they collect each year money, doesn't go toward their PUC bill, which it probably should, they put it towards, I believe it's Christmas cheer, and at the point that I had been there, they collected over $800. These people are just great community leaders, and in discussing with them, Brenda mentioned to me that it was their greatest joy to see these kids come through, and she wondered if there was a possibility of having a bus bring the kids through, and she, she said to me, how cool would that be? And I said, how cool would that be? So here we are. I hope that everyone can enjoy this, and this is a motion to, to hopefully make that happen. So thank you to everyone who decorates their yards, whether it's Halloween, Christmas, whatever. Our falls and winters can be dark and dreary, but you know, these community members certainly are a bright light to everyone, and it's much appreciated by me, and I hope to have support for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kaputo, councillor Garty.
No, just happy to support councillor Kaputo.
Anyone else? Councillor Hollingsworth?
I just want to echo, well done, everyone that participated in Halloween this year. And has the Spirit Awards been given out?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, congratulations to those that have received them. Thank you.
All in favor? Did we vote on that already? Yes, I did on Escribe, but I can't remember if we raised our hands or not. That carries.
Councillors Dufour and Bruny, any affirmative? Unanimous. And that brings us to Agenda item nine point three, Sault Ste. Marie Advanced Aerial Mobility and Defence Sector Synergy. It's a motion by councillors Guardian and Zagordo, whereas the City of Sault Ste. Marie, through its key strategic partners, including Sault College, Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Centre, and private industry, possesses significant existing assets in aviation, applied research, and advanced manufacturing. And whereas city council has previously directed staff to explore the feasibility of establishing local defence and munitions production facility, including the need for Canadian self-sufficiency in this critical sector, and the foundational role of local industry, for example, Algoa Steel and infrastructure. And whereas the global and national unmanned aerial systems or drone sector is rapidly converging with the defence and security sectors, creating new high-value opportunities in counter-uncrued aerial systems, Arctic surveillance, and specialized components that align directly with the city's ambition to diversify its industrial base. And whereas Northern Ontario's unique geographical features and non-congested airspace offer a distinct competitive advantage for the development and testing of specialized Canadian aerial technologies, particularly for beyond visual line of sight, Great Lakes maritime operations, and dual-use security and defence applications. And whereas federal funding agencies, notably the Federal Economic Development Agency for Northern Ontario, FedNOR, prioritize investment in regional economic diversification and technology adoption through key programs such as the Regional Economic Growth Through Innovation and Northern Ontario Development Program and the Regional Artificial Intelligence Initiative, which can be strategically leveraged by combining the focus on the AAM and defence sectors. Now therefore be it resolved that city council request that the Community and Enterprise Services Department include opportunities for an advanced aerial mobility hub as a component dedicated to defining the opportunities that explicitly support or accelerate the objectives of the formally approved motion to explore a defence munitions feasibility study.
Councillor Garty?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, I want to admit that I recognize I've been focused on bringing various economic development motions before council, and I want to outline my reasoning. And like, you know, most, I'm sure, I'm concerned, I'm very concerned about our economic future, considering some of our challenges presently, and I think we need to act as a community. And I think we need to act with a much greater sense of urgency that at least I'm seeing, and I'm trying to do my part to create and convey that urgency. It's never been clear that our community can't rely on Algoa Steel as its economic present, much less its future. We have to do everything we can to create jobs and opportunity for people, and I'm trying to do my best in my limited role as a city councillor, and I'll continue these efforts as long as I serve in this capacity. I think this synergy works in with what economic development staff is looking at in our previous motion, and I'm hoping that they could work this into, into that, into the information that they're eventually, hopefully, going to bring back to us. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Garty. Councillor Zagordo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add that I'm very impressed by my colleague in terms of reaching out and coming up with ideas outside the box in terms of helping out our employment opportunities in Sault Ste. Marie and assisting all our community partners as best we can. So I'm very happy to support him in this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Zagordo, any other councillors? Okay, saying none, we'll have a vote on the matter, all in favor? That carries.
Bring us to bylaws. Motion by councillors Dufour and Garty, resolved that all bylaws under item 12 of the agenda under date November 3, 2025, save and accept bylaw 2025-155 be approved?
All in favor?
And a motion by councillors Dufour and Garty, resolved that bylaw 2025-155 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the agreement between the city and Algoa District School Board for the leasing of space at the expanded Northern Community Centre be approved?
All in favor?
I have a motion by councillors Vezel, Allen, and Scott, resolved that this council move into closed session to discuss two items concerning a proposed disposition of land by the municipality or local board, one item concerning labor relations or employee negotiations, and one item concerning negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Further be it resolved that should the said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? That carries.
And I have a motion by councillors Dufour and Garty that this council now adjourn.
That carries.